Good evening. I'm Mary Dixon, President of the League of Women Voters of Glendale-Burbank, and I would like to welcome you to this forum. As we begin our evening of democracy in action, let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The League of Women Voters was started in 1920 after women won the right to vote. For over forty years, the League has been open to both men and women. Our local organization was formed here in 1940, so we are celebrating our 77th anniversary this year. We are strong supporters of the election process, and the League joins the city of Burbank in encouraging voters to not only vote themselves, but to reach out to your friends and neighbors and encourage them to vote. For the February 28 election, the deadline for registering to vote or changing your registration is Monday, February 13. The questions you will be hearing tonight are questions we have received from the public. We hope the candidates will find these questions to be challenging, enabling the voters to make an informed decision. Tonight's candidate forum rules call for adherence to the terms of civil discourse for both candidates and the public. The hallmark of a democracy is the willingness of all members of the community to treat each other with courtesy and respect, not just the people that we agree with. It is in that spirit that we are here this evening to engage in a vital part of our democratic process, a civilized discussion of the important issues that confront our communities. So I want to thank all of the candidates and the audience for being here tonight. The League also thanks the city of Burbank for once again providing voters with the opportunity to view the forum, both in person here tonight and via rebroadcast on the Burbank Channel and streaming on the city's YouTube channel. We are particularly grateful for the assistance of the Public Information Office. We have many of our League members here tonight working to make this forum happy happen. Included are our timekeepers Renee Lask and Tamela Takahashi, question sorters Joan Hardy, audience greeters Marcia Ramos and Mike Chapman. Special thanks to Tom Carson, who organized the forum. And now I would like to introduce our League moderator for this evening's forum, Rita Sverne. Rita is a longtime League member with much experience in moderating forums. We are grateful to Rita and the many hours that she dedicates to the League.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening and welcome. This forum will be broadcast this evening and then at various times until the election date on the Burbank Channel and the YouTube Channel of the City of Burbank. No reproduction or rebroadcast of this forum may be made without the prior written permission of the League of Women Voters and the City of Burbank. No digital or other forms of photography or recording are permitted in these chambers during the forum. The audience here tonight is invited to submit written questions for the candidates. Please raise your hand if you'd like to ask a question, and one of the monitors will provide you with a card and pencil. Questions will be collected only during the opening statement and the first question. We would request that the audience turn off all cell phones and pagers and that they refrain from applauding or otherwise disrupting the forum. If a candidate's supporters are disruptive during another candidate's remarks, the other candidate will be given additional time to compensate for the interruption. Additionally, attacks of a personal nature including private matters having no bearing on a candidate's public persona or ability to perform the duties of the office in a competent ethical manner will not be tolerated. If a candidate makes a personal attack during his/her remarks, the time required for me to interrupt the candidate and remind him of the rule will be taken from his or her own speaking time. All of the candidates for the Burbank City Council election were invited to participate in this evening's forum. Unfortunately, Mr. Carr is ill and unable to participate. I'd like to begin by introducing the candidates for the Burbank City Council here this evening. They are in ballot order Sharon Springer, Councilmember Jess Talamontes, Gregory Sousa, Councilmember Bob Frutos, Juan Guillen, Constantine Anthony, and Councilmember David Gordon. Each candidate will be allowed one minute for an opening statement with emphasis on their reasons for deciding to run for election to the Burbank City Council this year. There will then be a total of eight questions during the forum. The initial question will be addressed to all the candidates at the forum, beginning with candidate number one. Although this is not our standard process, considering the importance of this question and to ensure that all the candidates have sufficient time to consider their response, we have previously provided this question to all of the candidates. Each candidate will be allowed up to two minutes to respond to this question. Following this initial question, there will be seven more questions, each question addressed to a different candidate, beginning with candidate number one. None of these questions have been provided to any of the candidates prior to the forum. For each question, the initial candidate will be allowed up to two minutes to respond, and the next two candidates will be allowed up to one minute to respond. The second question will be addressed to candidate two, and so on. Following these questions, there will be an open round, where each candidate will have up to one minute to address any of the forum questions, not previously addressed to him or her. Following the question period, the candidates will be given two minutes each for a closing statement. During the opening and closing statements and the question responses, our timekeepers will alert candidates to the time remaining with signs of one minute, 30 seconds, and then a stop sign when they are out of time. We'll now begin with opening statements. Ms. Springer, your opening statement, please.
My name is Sharon Springer. I'm running for Burbank City Council, and I'm delighted to be here, and I thank you very much for coming. I've been in Burbank, I've lived in Burbank for 25 years, I've operated a business here, I've been very active in my community for the previous 10 years, and it all started with a speed problem on my street. I kept my neighbors together for two years through four city council meetings, four traffic commission meetings, and now we have a safer street, we're a tighter knit community, and we're very close knit. I've been on the Burbank Water and Power Board going on two years, and I'm the liaison to the Sustainable Burbank Commission. I'm very familiar with department heads, city staff, our nonprofits, and I'm running because I'd like to step up to the plate and apply my knowledge and experience to address the challenges such as traffic and transportation, housing and our budget deficit that Burbank faces, and also fully exploit our opportunities and move our city forward in a very positive way.
Thank you. Mr. Talamontes, your opening statement, please.
Good evening. My name is Jess Talamontes, and I'm running for reelection to your city council. I am a 50-year resident, attend at Burbank schools. My wife and I raised three kids here. I served over 32 years on the Burbank Fire Department and retired at the rank of captain. My wife Sandy is a nurse at St. Joseph's Medical Center. She just celebrated 41 years as a nurse here at St. Joe's. I served the community for two terms and twice as mayor, and I'm currently your mayor. I've decided to run again because there's a lot of unfinished business to be done. We have lots of issues when it comes to the budget, we have infrastructure deficits that we have to address, there's traffic, you know, issues that we have to address, and the most important one is the affordability of housing issues. So there's a lot of unfinished work that I feel I have the experience moving forward, and I'm asking for your consideration as well as your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sousa, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Greg Sousa. I've lived in Burbank for 20 years. I served honorably in the Armed Forces. I have a wife and I have a son who's currently in the seventh grade here in Burbank. And I'm running because I feel that the current city council majority has not adequately protected the interests of residents. We've all seen the effects of overdevelopment, and we know it can take now 20 minutes just to go to the store or to run a simple errand, and we know that we have traffic running through our neighborhoods, we know we have people that are using residential neighborhoods as a parking lot for overdevelopment. So I would like to address those. I believe we should put people first ahead of the developers. If you're tired of a council that says one thing and does another, if you're tired of the overdevelopment, if you're sick of traffic, then I would respectfully ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frutos, your opening statement, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bob Frutos, and I want to thank you for the opportunity that you have given to me to serve as your council member since 2013, and it was my privilege to serve as your mayor in 2015. I have demonstrated my 100% dedication to the residents of Burbank by retiring from my 29-year career in law enforcement. I am committed to making a difference for the good of our community. Over the last three and a half years, I have worked with our different neighborhoods, supporting the Avon community with the cell tower ordinance, the Rancho community with the Mariposa Bridge, and placing stop signs around our elementary schools for safety. As mayor, the council passed the following: a balanced budget with a 5-0 vote, passed a mid-year funding to bring our police department back up to full strength, developed interim control ordinance for neighborhood design guidelines. I am looking forward that there are so many important issues to tackle over in the next few years, that I ask you for your consideration to allow me to continue to serve.
Thank you. Mr. Guillen, your opening statement, please.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. I'm Juan Guillen, number six on the ballot. And I first ran four years ago, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed. I was going to change the world and balance a budget and address infrastructure issues, and that didn't work out so well with my first election. But I haven't given up. I remain engaged. I love this city, and that's why we have so many people in this room, because we love this city, and I want to protect it and make sure that we don't sell it from underneath our residents to the highest bidder. It's the residents that make our city special, and we need to preserve and protect what makes Burbank unique, and that's our police and fire services, our public services, our parks, our libraries, our senior services, and we can't do that in the same direction we're going with an unbalanced budget and wasteful spending. So I look forward to being one of your votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony, your opening statement, please.
Hi. My name is Constantine Anthony, and I am just a regular citizen of Burbank who has watched this entire country lose its middle class because of large corporate interests. I see it here in Burbank. I live it, I see it, and I have been a sufferer of these large, powerful developers and investors move the people who cannot afford to live here anymore out of the city limits. If you want to live here, if you grew up here, if your family started here, and you want to raise your kids here, I'm the guy you need, because I'm just like you. I was pushed out of my apartment, I was made homeless. I need to see a large group of residents and regular people rise up and take control of their city again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. David Gordon, currently in the Burbank City Council, a senior member. Of course, it is a privilege and has been an honor to serve the city of Burbank and its people. Briefly, I feel that I've had an opportunity over the past quarter century being directly involved both in the planning board and civic matters in the city to learn a little bit about the people and what they need, what they want. I try to bring common sense to the council, be the voice of reason, try to work with the council members to steer in the right direction. We have big issues to address that I'd like to continue working on, things that we know about housing, we know about our economy, we have infrastructure. We have to prepare for the future. We have to have workforce training and career techno-education among our students so that when they come out of school, they can get a good job and be able to come back and live and work in Burbank. So I'm very proud to be here again. I seek your vote. I think I can continue to do a good job. I'm hoping for positive change in the council in this next term, and we can make Burbank better than it is. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now begin the question period. The initial question is addressed to all of the candidates. Burbank, like its neighboring communities, is facing increased population pressures. Since the city is already largely built out, many current and potential new residents are finding it difficult to find adequate affordable housing. What kind of city programs would you support to address this important need? Ms. Springer, your two-minute response, please.
First of all, we must put our heads together and embrace this challenge. We followed instructions, and we've been fruitful, and we've multiplied. In 1974, there were 200 million Americans, and today there are over 340 million. And one thing is, it doesn't make sense to demand affordable housing and then not want any housing constructed in our city. One thing we can do is we can bring up our incomes. Burbank is very job-rich. Many, many people come to work in our city. Our median household income is $66,000. The average annual income of the jobs that are here is $80,000. And there, I'm not the only one who's thinking about this, we need to make sure that our workers have ample opportunity to participate in our job market. All of the proposed apartment dwellings that are in the pipeline are for upper-income earners. We need to work with the developers to determine how affordable units may be concluded in their proposals. We need to legitimately look at reducing construction costs, eliminating some of the frills, not everybody wants them. We need to look at potentially more studio apartments, apartments with shared kitchens. There are some residents who are willing to do that, who would love to do that. If there's a way that we can legitimately reduce parking requirements, then we must examine that legitimately, not create parking congestion, but many people want to get out of their cars, we need to help them do that. The cost to construct a parking space is $40,000 to $80,000, and that can add half to your rent. The Golden State specific plan offers much, many opportunities. We need to assess every project just like a developer does. Transportation Measure M is going to help us build residential units next to public transit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Talamontes, your two-minute response, please.
Thank you. The housing crisis in California is due to combination of both a housing shortage, which is supply and demand, and a lack of affordability. Since the year 2000, rents have increased by 28%, while incomes have dropped by 8%. Over 60% of the very low-income families spend over half of income on housing, where the recommended percentage is like 30. They're spending over 60%. I represent over 88 cities in LA County as president of the LA Division of the League of California Cities, and we've made affordable housing, we've made affordable housing as one of the primary goals to focus on this coming year. Burbank has only built 57 units in the past six years. The city currently has a land use consultant looking at part of the Golden State redevelopment, which consists of approximately 500 acres, to see what we can do in that area, what kind of land uses can be done over there. Some challenges that we face are lack of funding or fiscal incentives, regulatory barriers which increase costs, local zoning requirements. Solutions are two-pronged. We have to approach this working with our county, state, and federal representatives. We're going to be identifying some funding sources that are available at all three levels. Work with developers. I want to see community-conscious development, and I want to work with developers that will have that in mind when designing projects for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sousa, your two-minute response, please.
Thank you very much. Well, right off the bat, I want to say that one thing that we don't want to do is make the problem worse and also increase congestion while we're doing it. So I would object to any policy that would forego the parking requirements. We can always go back and repurpose the parking later on if it turns out that in the future people use their cars less. But for now, it's unrealistic. People use cars. People like to have their cars as much as we might like them to do otherwise. There are several ways that we can induce affordable housing, but most of those involve government coming in with a blunt instrument, and we have to be very careful because we are balancing competing interests here. We can, for instance, use tax policy and tax incentives to promote affordable housing. We can use it to stabilize the cost of rent. We can use it to make mortgages more affordable, but that's really not something that we can do at the city level. So that's above our level of discussion here. But what we can do is we can use zoning, and we can use our planning to encourage developments that stabilize housing and provide housing that's not so subject to speculation. Basically, we have a land rush going on, and we can create an environment where that land rush is slowed down a bit. I understand that there is a plan for the Golden State neighborhood that would do just that, and Dr. Gordon will of course tell you more about that. But it's very promising that we have a plan that doesn't use a blunt instrument, that we have a plan that would actually allow people a chance to start out in a home and build some equity in it without encouraging speculation. I think we should look at that. We need to provide parking, and we simply have to address this in a rational way that doesn't make the problem worse.
Thank you. Mr. Frutos, your two-minute response, please.
Thank you. With the historically low homeownership of about 54% and record-high rental costs, the dream of owning a home in California is evaporating. Teachers, nurses, firefighters, police officers, and other middle-class workers should be able to afford a place to live in the communities that they work and serve. With that, in the United States, a commonly accepted guideline for affordable housing is a cost that does not exceed 30% of the household's gross income. So if you think about our real estate market here, how high it is, how that 30% would relate to that. The Burbank median income for a single person is right around $68,000, and a combined couple is around $82,000. I've been representing our city through the California League of Cities on the Public Policy Committee, and some of the discussions I've been personally involved with is the state-elected officials are currently having discussions on mandates that all cities comply with new affordable housing laws, just like the R1 change that took into effect this month. They're taking our local control away. I would like to have an open dialogue with residents of Burbank, builders, developers, city planners, et cetera, to create a real viable solution for affordable housing. I support the current discussion going on in Sacramento to invest a portion of our state's budget surplus to address the housing crisis. I want to work with Cal Home Program, which provides grants, loans to local governments, and nonprofit organizations for partnerships with them to address the housing crisis. We only have 46,000 places to live in our city. We could do much better for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Guillen, your two-minute response, please.
Burbank is in great demand, and the council sells it at a discount. And then, when they come for entitlements, when the developers come for entitlements, they give them whatever they want, and they don't address any of the issues of our concerns or any concerns of our city. Attainable housing for first-time homeowners, housing for our teachers, lower income for our senior housing. They address none of those issues, and what happens is, they create these developments that push out the lower income and now create housing for the elite, pushing those lower incomes into an already tight market where there is not availability. So what does that do? It drives demand up and rents go up. I recently spoke to a developer of IKEA, and I said, "Listen, I would love for you to create a community here. Create something that addresses our needs for senior housing, something for our teachers, because our teachers have to drive 30 miles away to be able to teach here in the city, and first-time homeowners, and do it as a hand-up. So let's create a condo sub-leased to them with the first right of purchase, and then give them a little token of a percentage so that they can have a little starter money when they purchase their first home." We need to come up with solutions that address the concerns of the community and not put the profits to the developers, number one. The residents and the communities have to come first. Tellari would have been a great example, where you could have put Warner Brothers or studio employees in there so that there wouldn't be traffic and reduce traffic there, but they didn't. It is going to be for executives only and a weekend house, and that doesn't address the true concerns that we have in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony, your two-minute response, please.
Over half the people who work in the city of Burbank cannot afford to live in the city of Burbank. And in fact, more than 50% of our residents rent here, and all of the new developments that you've seen, all of the progress that's being made, is large-scale, high-end, elite developments, these luxury apartment buildings, you know, 11-foot ceilings, crown molding. They're lovely. They are gorgeous. I've seen them. I can't afford to live there. My entire platform runs on a few issues, but at the top is a rent stabilization ordinance for the 21st century. I want to put in a modern-style rent control that targets the largest buildings, the largest apartment complexes, any unit 50 and above, any building with 50 and above units. Make them play fair, because the small building owner, the guy who owns a duplex, the guy who owns a sixplex, and the individual renters, they are taking the brunt, and they are losing their incomes, and they're being forced out. If we do not do something now, if we do not get all of these 50% of residents who can't afford to live here, if they do not come out en masse and vote to put an ordinance in place to protect their own assets, they will be forced out. Their kids will not be able to live here, and their parents won't be able to come home and stay with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, your two-minute response, please.
Thank you. The lack of affordable housing in Burbank is not about low-cost housing. It's about people working regular jobs, earning good money, but struggling to pay the rent, and for first-time homebuyers, being unable to afford the starter home, or even executives trying to relocate here from another more modest region in the country or state. We can address this issue, but it will require leadership in our city council members, not developer cheerleading, ignoring residents' concerns, and repeatedly rubber-stamping high-density, high-cost, underparked apartment projects. The current flood of council-supported, high-density, high-cost housing development is displacing existing longstanding affordable housing units in Burbank and displacing its residents. This type of Wild West development must stop. Either we have the vision and determination to fix this problem at the local level, or the state can decide to step in, completely bypass local zoning control, and impose high-density, low-cost housing that could well be completely, may well be completely incompatible with Burbank's traditional homes and neighborhoods. I'm currently working on a council subcommittee studying and preparing the Golden State specific plan, about 600 acres just east of the airport, ready for economic recycling and renewal. We're hoping to designate at least 100 acres for new types of to-own-and-rental affordable housing in an affordable housing zone. This will begin to address the question of housing affordability and be designed to preserve affordability and encourage long-term residency. Preliminary discussions with state housing authorities suggest this may lead the way for building a much-needed new elementary school in this area to serve the new affordable housing zone. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is directed first to Ms. Springer. The current city council has notified residents that the city's budget will be facing material deficits in the near term. What do you see as the most serious long-term challenges in the city's budget? What kind of solutions would you support if elected? Your two-minute response, please.
Well, I think it takes stepping outside of the box and looking at creative ways to bring more money into the city. And long-term, we have a pension issue that is going to get worse before it gets better. In March of this year, I suggested that we get IKEA to pay for the naming rights from First Street to IKEA Way by simply changing street signs, that the value of that was about $4 million, because Burbank would like to be a slow-growth city, and it's not something that's typically given away. It's worth millions of dollars. Other cities are doing it. I talked with the firm that appraises naming rights, so we need to, and that firm is talking with other cities, because we're not the only city that's facing these budget deficits. So I will not cut services. We need alternative ways to enhance our budget. We need to do reasonable development. We need to analyze each proposed development just like the developer does. We cannot go in the hole on these, and if it's not going to work, we need to make it work for us, or otherwise, it will just be too expensive to provide the services, the police services, the streets, the roads, the water. And so we just need to... And so we just need to do a cost-benefit analysis and make sure that the development pencils for us.
Thank you. Mr. Talamontes, your one-minute response, please.
You know, traditionally, the budget is the biggest concern. There's a couple of things. Budget, as well as infrastructure needs and improvements that are needed. The city of Burbank, we have, it's a service provider. We don't have, we have a couple of departments that are revenue generators, but traditionally, we provide a service to the community, so we don't generate. So what do we have to look at? We have expenses that are here, and we have revenue that's here. So there's a gap here. So we have to find more efficient ways for the revenue to lower revenue, and we have to find ways of increasing the revenue, I mean, increasing the expenses, decreasing expenses, I'm sorry, and increasing the revenue. So, how do we do that? We have to go out, I would propose going out to the community and asking them for an advisory vote. What would you propose? And giving them two or three examples of what potentially they would, where would you want to cut? You know, what departments, what area in the city would you want to cut?
Thank you. Mr. Sousa, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you very much. Clearly, the unfunded pension liabilities are a serious issue facing us, but we're not going to solve that at the city level. That's a problem that's endemic to the entire state, of any city that's been around for any length of time. We're not going to develop our way out of this problem. There is arguments made by current council members that we will simply increase our property tax base. That will not work. We will simply decrease the desirability of living in Burbank to the point where our property values will fall, and people won't want to shop here as much anymore, so we'll lose both property tax base and we'll lose sales tax base. We're not going to get there by raiding our utilities, okay? The utilities should use the, any money they realize over and above operating expenses to make improvements and keep our infrastructure. We could save money, we will eventually have to save money by eliminating some staff for the short term, and if we have to do that, then we should eliminate from the top. Our city workers are essential, they know how to do their jobs, they don't need expensive department heads always telling them how to do their jobs. We can get by. Somebody has to go on furlough, it should be department heads. Thank you.
The next question is directed first to Mr. Talamontes. Many cities in the region use parking fees to help pay for and maintain municipal parking, public parking areas. Burbank does not, but rather relies on its property taxes to pay for this purpose. Would you support introducing appropriate parking fees to pay for and maintain an appropriate part of the city's public parking? Please explain. Your two-minute response, please.
You know, a lot of cities do that. Obviously, when I travel over to Glendale, there's a portion that's, they charge for parking. We have a parking authority here in Burbank that that fund is dwindling, so we have to come up with creative ways of how to maintain that fund. And what that fund does is maintain all of our structures, our parking structures. So, and I've seen them, and I'm sure a lot of people in the community have seen how they've been just deteriorating over the years, and that's because our parking authority funding has been deteriorating. So what is the, what do we propose? We would propose possibly charging for parking, maybe a two-hour free parking if you have dinner downtown, four hours if you have dinner and go to a movie. I would, I would leave it to the community. I would make it a vote for the community to see what they would like to see. But I would propose something like a parking, definitely some type of charge for parking at the more convenient level, closer to the downtown area. The ones that are out farther apart, you can leave those alone. But at the same time, we just have to start thinking out of the box, what is going to generate revenue for, to make for those losses in that parking authority?
Thank you. Mr. Sousa, your one-minute response.
Would you be so kind as to repeat the question?
Certainly. Many cities in the region use parking fees to help pay for and maintain municipal parking areas. Burbank does not, but rather relies on its property taxes to pay for this purpose. Would you support introducing appropriate parking fees to pay for and maintain an appropriate part of the city's public parking? Please explain. Your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. The problem with providing something at no cost is it gets abused if there is absolutely no cost. That's why we have, in some cases, modest copays for a visit to the doctor. If you put any cost to it at all, then people tend to value it a little bit more. I think we may see the same thing with our parking. Certainly, we have to do something to get a handle on our parking issues. We have too many residents whose neighborhoods are being used for parking lots for the commercial areas of our city. If that's the case, then we need to generate revenue somehow to mitigate that problem, perhaps to build some parking structures, and we should not dip into our property tax revenues, which are already earmarked for other important things such as police, fire, and our schools. So I would support, as you said, an appropriate cost of parking. What that would be would have to be decided through, as Mr. Talamontes said, public input, but as long as we're making it free, we are seeing abuse.
Mr. Frutos, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. This is a very emotional issue for a lot of people across the city. Some people want to preserve the uniqueness where we don't pay for parking, and I like that personally. But the reality is, when we have our aging parking structures and we don't have enough money in our general fund, we are currently looking at, how would I say, we're right now at a 0.5 deficit, and by 2021, we'll be at 8.7 million deficit. These are some of the tough decisions that we have to face, but I'd rather explore all options to still preserve free parking, but if not, we really have to look at some of our high commercial areas, that maybe it's reasonable now to start having this conversation for paying for parking. But it's definitely an emotional issue that, I have my reservations, but I would not hesitate exploring a conversation to move this forward, because we've got to take care of those parking structures. They need the infrastructure.
Thank you. The next question is directed first to Mr. Sousa. Our current central library opened in 1963 and is very inadequate for present needs and usage. How do you believe the city should pursue implementing the replacement of the central library? Would you support such a replacement? Please explain your answer. Mr. Sousa, your two-minute response, please.
Thank you. I would support such a replacement, but perhaps now is not the time for it. As Mr. Frutos just mentioned, we're looking at a projected deficit, and certainly, the library, while something that we very much like to have, is something that we could defer. If we have a projected $8-million deficit in five years, I can't see how it makes sense to put a brand-new library in right now. The library as it is may be dated, but it is certainly adequate, and we do have the Buena Vista Library, which is in fine shape, and we should concentrate on fiscal responsibility and make improvements like that when we can best afford it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frutos, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. I currently sit as the council liaison to the library services to the Board of Trustees. I think this discussion is important, we need to look at this. We have the property right across the street where the Wells Fargo Bank is to actually build a new library, but we don't have the finances in our budget, but maybe it's time to have a conversation with the members of the public to see if they're willing to invest through a bond measure, because we need to bring that library up to speed to current times to make sure it's usable to everybody, especially the next generation of kids growing up, to make sure we have a state-of-the-art library, and then we can turn that library into the next open space in our city as a public park. But it would really take the participation of our community to invest through a bond measure, but we can't do it through our general fund. But I would support a new library. We need it that's old and outdated. Libraries are important to our community, they service everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Guian, your one-minute response, please.
This year, we had a $1.5-million budget deficit, and we had to dig into our reserves to balance the budget. So creating expenditures now, despite being on the Library Board of Trustees, and I'm a little biased, is probably not the time to spend that money. We have assets that we don't take advantage of, right across the street from the library, the old Wells Fargo, Wells Fargo building. I think it's been empty for at least five years. We have not been collecting rent, and we have not done anything with that building. During the times of the recession in 2009, when there was great demand for computer services, we could have created a computer hub so that people could have been looking for jobs there, and we didn't. And so we say we keep, think, we need to think outside the box, but like I first started four years ago, what's the definition of insanity? Doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results? That's what we do, and we expect that the budget is going to balance itself and we'll miraculously have enough money for our needs.
Thank you. The next question is directed first to Mr. Frutos. What role, if any, does our city government have in protecting residents who may face deportation under the new president's policies on immigration? Your two-minute response, please.
Thank you very much. It is our responsibility as a municipal government, elected officials, to protect anybody and everybody that's in our city. I do not support using our local police department to enforce federal immigration laws. Being a police officer with the Los Angeles Police Department for 29 years, I understand the importance that a municipal police officer shall and will protect everybody. I don't care who you are, you're in our city, you're a resident, you're part of our community. I don't believe people should live in fear of our local police department basically asking them, "What is your status?" That's not our role. We, as a community, as a city, as elected officials, need to be user-friendly, protect everybody equally and fairly, and they should not live in fear. They should be welcomed, whether it's the homeless person that's down on their luck, they need, they need representation, they need protection, to immigrants that come to our city. It's not our position to say you're here legally or not, but it's our position to provide the quality of service in a humane way to each and everybody that's in our city.
Thank you. Mr. Guian, your one-minute response, please.
As a first-generation, son of immigrants, I don't think anyone should have to live in fear. For the last eight years, all I've been hearing is, "They're not working with the president, they're not working with the president." Well, we need to reach out to our electeds and ensure that we are working with the president, whether we agree on everything or not, we must work together to ensure that we protect our residents and that we're putting the people first and not dividing our community. And we can't do that through scare tactics. I'm not sure, and I don't think anyone's sure exactly what he wants to do yet, our newly-elected president, but we must work together to make sure that our city is safe and we do whatever we need to, to protect the residents.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony, your one-minute response, please.
My mother came to this country in 1974, and I remember in high school, sitting with her and going over her test questions for her citizenship test, and I've, I've never seen her more happy. It was a dedication unlike anything I'd ever seen her go through before. There's an old saying, "Just because it's legal doesn't mean it's right." If you're going to send in, if someone is going to send in a federal immigration officer to come and take away any member, any citizen in Burbank, they're going to have to take me first.
Thank you. The next question is directed first to Mr. Guian. Do you support the proposal to invest in stations and double-track on the Antelope Valley and Ventura County lines so that MetroLink can operate a more frequent service and provide improved regional mobility? What changes would you recommend? Please explain. Mr. Guian, your two-minute response, please.
So I know the issue of the high-speed rail has come, come into Burbank, and we, I believe, received $1.4 million to do studies on how a hub would work here in Burbank. And once again, this goes back to preserving our residents' lifestyles and what they're accustomed to here in the city. If we are to have a hub here, we must ensure that we reap the greatest benefit with the least amount of impact. I've just received an email from a resident who I have not responded to recently, and he said, "I live not too far from the train tracks, we deal with the planes, but at night, we deal with the horns of the trains as they cross intersections." And we need to address those concerns and make sure that they don't go unheard and fall on deaf ears, and if you don't commit the next four years of your life, the issues will be addressed, because that's what happens quite often, is you bring a concern and you show up once, and they're like, "Thank you very much for coming, we appreciate your participation," and then nothing happens. And so, we must address the issues of the residents. I know that I live about two miles away from the train tracks, and at midnight, I can hear the horns blow, and I'm sure a lot of residents that aren't adjacent to the train tracks can hear them. So we need to make sure that whatever comes into our city protects the residents as much as possible with the greatest benefit.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony, your one-minute response, please.
The trains that come through, they honk when there's an intersection. So when we look at the development of the MetroLink, when we look at the development of any high-speed rail, any future developments, we have to look at the, the infrastructure that they're building through and they're building around, and they need to provide adequate funding to adapt to that situation. So we don't have these middle-of-the-night waking-up horns. We've had an airport for decades, and we've had studios for decades, and they bring in, you know, high turnover and tourism. We can handle a train system, but we have to do it in the way that we've done it in the past, not the way we're doing it now, where anyone can come in and build anything they want. We have to preserve the neighborhoods as we see it and reap the benefits of these new developments, and to care for the citizens that are already here, not just the ones passing through.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, your one-minute response, please.
Would you please repeat that question?
Certainly. Do you support the proposal to invest in stations and double-track on the Antelope Valley and Ventura County lines so that MetroLink can operate a more frequent service and provide improved regional mobility? What changes would you recommend? Please explain.
The city of Burbank, just recently, with the newly-opened Antelope Valley Line Station, did authorize to contribute some money towards the maintenance, but the investment in the actual line, I don't think that would be coming from city resources. That's either a metro funding thing, or perhaps a state funding thing, and it depends. I think we need to identify first if the demand is there before we commit large amounts of resources to lay additional tracks, but with the one on Antelope Valley, I understand if you don't have two tracks, the use will be very limited. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is directed first to Mr. Anthony. Apart from commercial retail, on what other areas of economic development should the city focus? Your two-minute response, please.
The shops that make Burbank Burbank are the mom-and-pop, owner-operated, small-scale businesses. You go down Magnolia, and you'll see a thriving economy, people who love this city, people who want to stay here, but their paychecks are running thin. They are barely making their rent. Every year that goes by, their profit margin falls, and sooner or later, it's going to be at a deficit, and they won't be able to stay here anymore. We can't not, we cannot allow large-scale developments like the new Walmart or the expanded IKEA to become the big boat in the pond that ripples everybody into capsizing, because the smaller ships, these are the middle-class people of Burbank who keep our economy thriving. So we need to see an increase in small restaurants, unique tastes on that end. We need to see an increase in, you know, high-wage services, more, more union jobs, something that provides for the people who live here and can allow them to pay their rent here. Those are the jobs that I want to see come in.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. We need to attract manufacturing and significant high-tech businesses to our community. We need to train our students and workforce with career technical education, high-tech training, so they're prepared for today's and tomorrow's high-tech jobs that will stimulate economic development and growth in our community, allow people to afford to live and buy things here, and will really be a power engine in our community. We can do that by having excellent infrastructure, facilities, housing, all sorts of support of the community to attract and retain. We have many aerospace businesses still here, even though Lockheed's gone. We need to train our people for those jobs, and employers will come and invest. And it's not only national or regional, it is international. We can do that, and it can make our economy very strong. At the same time, we need to support our small businesses, as was stated, because they're a key employer in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Springer, your one-minute response, please.
Well, Burbank? Burbank has 150,000 jobs. We have a very robust job market. We need to make sure that everybody in Burbank who wants to participate in that job market has the ability to do that through training, internships, and it's going to take a partnership with And it's going to take a partnership with our schools, with Woodbury, Leadership Burbank, our Chamber of Commerce. I think that also with our mixed-use developments, we might want to consider as part of that is live-work units, because maybe we're requiring something to be built that might be a little bit obsolete, since so many people are shopping on the Internet. I support small business. When IKEA went in, I was at city council four times. There were small-business owners begging for help, and they got none. And that won't happen. If I am on city council, I will work to retain our small businesses and our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is directed first to Mr. Gordon. The developer of the old IKEA site plans to construct a large mixed-use project, including a large number of apartments, a 200-room hotel, and 40,000 square feet of retail space on the ground level. Would you support or oppose such a project? Why or why not? Mr. Gordon, your two-minute response, please.
That has not yet come before the city council, and I have not seen the details of the proposal. So as far as a black-or-white supporter or oppose, I cannot say yet whether I could support or oppose it. But I can tell you that people are very concerned about the intensity, intensity of that particular project. But you cannot look at that project alone. The reason people are so concerned in our community is an accumulation or cumulative effect within a one- or two-mile area of that particular project. There are very large projects coming forward. Those projects were made possible and encouraged by positions and policies of city councils, much of which I stood to oppose over years, to encourage and give away to developers large amounts of high-density development, mixed-use that is foreign to Burbank, to slam it down our throats, and now we have it. So this particular project, we have to see when it comes forward. We have to know if it's a by-right development. Many of the decisions concerning the IKEA were dealt away years ago, and people are now feeling and beginning to feel the impacts of these developments. So even if this project is fully mitigated with parking and traffic studies and sufficient sizing, even if it does it, even if we can get it to include affordable housing, it will be cursed with the impacts of the cumulative developments within very short distance, and those will add. So you have to look at cumulative impacts. You cannot single out one particular project. We do need housing to come forward, but it has to be housing that's appropriate for our community. There's a hotel associated with that project. We need to look at what it addresses, and we need to see the impacts in the community. Once I see those and evaluate those, once the adequate environmental study has been done, I'll be able to tell you if I can support or oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Springer, your one-minute response, please.
I think the redevelopment of that site needs, requires a lot of community input. It's a very large projected development. It's very new, and I believe that the cumulative impacts absolutely need to be studied and examined. It needs to be consistent with the neighborhood. And in the past, cumulative impacts have been ignored. Developments have just been plunked down without regard what's next to them, how people walk, are the pedestrians safe? The IKEA was plunked down without any consideration to the seniors who live there at the corner of San Fernando and Verdugo, the disabled housing in Providencia and San Fernando. So absolutely, that development needs to be looked at within the context of the surrounding with lots of community input.
Thank you. Mr. Tolemontes, your one-minute response, please.
Yes, thank you. You know, as a sitting council member, I have to agree with Dr. Gordon. I can't give you one way or another. We have been presented, but every time I meet with a developer, one of my first comments going in is, "I'm here to listen. I'm here to listen to your proposal." So moving forward, if people remember there at Third and, at 550 North Third, kitty-corner to that corner there, I turned, I reversed my decision, my vote, because I just felt that it was too much for that area. So we really have to be very proactive when it comes to that development site, include the community, definitely get some input from the community, because that's foremost and most important in my mind, to get the input from the community, see what's... And the other question is, is it a by-right? You know, we can, we can say as much as we want, but if the developer's coming in, any development within the city of Burbank is coming in by right, not asking anything other than building permits from the city, it's very difficult...
Thank you. At this time, there's an open round where each candidate can take up to one minute to address any of the forum questions not previously addressed to him or her. Ms. Springer, your one-minute response, please.
I just want to go back to the parking issue. I do not support development that is underparked, but if we can legitimately eliminate parking, there are, is a whole population of baby boomers who would like to leave their cars behind or move from a two-car family to a one-car family. And so the cost of a parking space can add $600 or $700 a month to your rent, and so why should anybody have to pay for something that they don't want or need? Also, Measure M is going to benefit us a lot. Proposed light rail on Glen Oaks, the expansion of the Orange Line to Pasadena, and a potential, my idea is a trolley on Magnolia to link them all into the Red Line. And all of that, it's all related. It will help reduce housing costs if we can eliminate some of the parking requirements for those people who don't want to use cars anymore.
Thank you. Mr. Tolemontes, your one-minute response, please.
Yes, I've got two concerns. Parking, in regards to that, I've already addressed that with, I'm currently talking with metro staff to try and get some funding to do a parking, citywide parking study within our community and see what the needs are, see what the potential development proposals might be in regards to where the city might build something and, you know, and add to the parking totals that we can, especially in Magnolia Park. The other is trains. In 2015, I asked, "What can, how can we make Buena Vista and Van Owen a quiet zone?" Right now, we're in the process of repurposing Clyburn. Many years ago, Clyburn and the railroad in Van Owen was given certain amount of monies, like $250,000. We're not gonna do anything there. I'd like to repurpose those monies to move over to the Buena Vista-Van Owen site and make that a quiet zone. We're almost there. We're about 80% almost finished.
Thank you. Mr. Sousa, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. I'd like to address the question about the old IKEA building. All things being equal and ignoring for the moment the question of whether it's a by-right development, I'm philosophically opposed to just piling on with the development. The community is never given a chance between one development and another to adjust to the new traffic patterns, to adjust to the new sightlines that they might have, and basically, they never get the quiet enjoyment of their premises. If developing that into 100, 200, 300 apartments is a good idea now, it'll be a good idea in a few years. There's really no rush on that. We need to revisit the 2035 general plan and ask ourselves if we really want to put a green light to just runaway development that really has no accountability to the community.
Thank you. Mr. Frutos, your one-minute response, please.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to go back to the question about a regional mobility transportation hub. I'm fully supporting that, of double-tracking the main line for MetroLink on the Antelope Valley Line, due to the fact that that's one more tool at our disposal to get more cars off our streets. We have to be open-minded, and that won't come from Burbank's money. This will come from what we voted as a region in the county of Los Angeles from Measure M transportation funds. A lot of our employees that work throughout our city and our studios come from Santa Clarita. It'd be really great to have that double-main line, more reliable train service, so more people can get off the train and ride their bike to the studios, have bike boxes there. We have to explore different regions of transportation hubs, and I would support that.
Thank you. Mr. Guillen, your one-minute response, please.
Parking fees and no enforcement? It's, we have four-hour parking and no enforcement, so if there's fees and no enforcement, how do we know people are paying the fees? We talk about growing business, and we create policy that makes it more difficult for business to be successful, Magnolia Park and parking being one of the issues. If everyone's riding bikes, then why are the residents on Magnolia Park impacted by the lack of parking? So you get four-hour parking, there's no patrol, no one's coming around. Then you request two-hour parking, but no one's coming around to enforce it. And then you get permit parking, and there's no enforcement. We need to address the issues. Let's be real. I don't think anyone rode their bike here today. And we keep telling people, "You don't need your cars. You're going to ride your bike and walk more." We need to be realistic. We live in California, and we ride for leisure, not to commute. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony, your one-minute response, please.
Mr. Sousa says something great earlier. If you put even the nominalist fee on something, people start to take it seriously and appreciate it more. Currently, if you rent in the city of Burbank, none of your taxes go to the city of Burbank. You just pay your bills and you're done. I, part of my rent control policy includes a one-quarter of 1% tax on all rental properties. That's if you pay $1,000 a month, $2.50 every month goes into the general fund. That protects, that pays for protection for the renter and for the small-scale business owner, and it also adds $1.7 million a year to our general fund. We'll fix the parking structures. We can update the central library, and we have enough money left over to deal with a lot of other issues that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, your one-minute response, please.
On the budget question, we have to understand, and voters need to look carefully, that the city council, three of the five members up there now, voted on a single project to give away, in a write-down of city remnant parcels, over $2 million. Had they not done that, they wouldn't be up here complaining about a budget deficit that they can't balance. Previous to that, earlier councils gave away over $60 million to form a redevelopment agency. And although I called for that to be returned years ago, which would also solve the budget deficit issue to our general fund, we're now getting it back in a trickle. With respect to the library, we need to be creative. The property that current central library sits on is limited in use for a library, but is very valuable for other uses. Perhaps we could look in a private exchange, where in exchange for the property, we could have a developer do something on that new, and maybe across the street has been mentioned, instead of purchasing with money, build us a new library or contribute to building a new library. Thank you.
Thank you. The candidates will now have two minutes each for their closing statements. Ms. Springer, your closing statement, please.
I'm action-oriented. I'm a collaborator. I've heard you want affordable housing, you want reduced traffic, and you want a long-term, balanced budget. Let's do it. I can do it. I'm going to give you examples of three projects in which I participated in our city. The first involves the Burbank Community Day School. It's a school for youth at risk. We started with a weed patch. Now there is a garden there. All we had to do was take the initial steps. Then we got a $2,500 grant from Home Depot. We had volunteers from Warner Brothers. We got a $500 grant from Armstrong. We had the L.A. Conservation Corps involved. Then, now, there's a culinary arts program at that school. We got a $10,000 kitchen grant from IKEA. This project has made tremendous impacts on their lives. We had to go rogue to get that project done. The next one is Johnny Carson Park. As a member of the Sustainable Burbank Commission, the Water Subcommittee, we proposed stream bed restoration at Johnny Carson Park. A long time ago, it was just turned into a concrete culvert. We pressed for Prop 84 funds. We got them. The city of Burbank got a $1.7 million grant to restore Johnny Carson Park. The next is the Phase Two of the Channel Bike Way. Fully funded, we addressed the concerns of the people. No, property values don't go down. No crime doesn't go up. It's very easy to check. All you have to do is call Captain Cremmons and ask him about Phase One. I am known as the soft-spoken, gentle candidate, but I get things done. You will never, ever hear me say, "It can't be done. My hands are tied. It's not possible." Thank you very much. I'm Sharon Springer. I'm number one on the ballot. Please vote for me.
Thank you. Mr. Tolemontes, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. I'd like, first of all, I'd like to thank, thank you, the League of Women Voters for hosting this event tonight, and also to the other candidates for sharing your vision with the community. You know, I've supported, over the last eight years that I've been on council, I've supported, I've supported balanced budget for the past eight years, funding for the new Memorial Stadium, keeping utility rates near the lowest in the region, installing permanent cul-de-sacs off of Alameda, implemented an ID code to stop benchinization while addressing design standards, construction of a bike path along the River Channel, reconstruction of Johnny Carson Park, protecting our house, our horsebridge over Mariposa, and the French school at the General Motorsite, which went through a couple of transitions of what was gonna be there. And also, a fully-staffed police department. So I don't have all the answers, but with your support, and more importantly, your vote, I have no doubt that we can do this together. Thank you for your consideration, and please vote for Just Tolemontes, number three on your ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sousa, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for coming out, and thank you for watching. Burbank needs to strike a balance between commercial and residential interests, and each phase of development should be followed by a period of recovery and adjustment. Unfortunately, we now have a city council that protects business interests at the expense of the people who live here, and city services have been affected. We've seen an increase in crime, while our police department remains woefully understaffed, along with our fire department. Our parks are becoming makeshift campgrounds, and our streets are clogged with traffic. We are not going to develop our way out of this. Our city services need a chance to catch up with demand. Our police and fire departments need to be at full strength when dealing with issues in our parks, our streets, and our neighborhoods. And it really defies logic that we should continue to approve large development while our city services are struggling to catch up. We also need to address the serious ethical lapses, which have led to sweetheart deals that benefit the privileged few at the expense of the taxpayer. The recent transfer of public money from a city agency in support of a partisan political position seriously undermined the integrity of our election, and the complacency of the majority of the city council on this issue is simply unacceptable. If we put people first, ahead of the developers, we can save Burbank from becoming just another part of LA. If you're fed up with the traffic, if you're tired of a city council that says one thing but does another, if you're unwilling to have change forced upon us by outside interests, this is your chance to do something about it. The ballots are coming out in the mail. Get your ballot, mark your choices, send your ballot back in. Together, we can put people first here in Burbank, and it begins with your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Frutos, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event tonight. Thank you. I am Bob Frutos, and I am proud to serve as your council member. I will continue to be committed to put in the hard work, as I find it very rewarding when residents call me on the phone just to thank me for facilitating information or resources that address their specific concerns. I believe in order to have a functional and effective council, council members should work cohesively in order to accomplish the business of the people. I have a track record of working collaboratively with all my colleagues on this council. I respectfully ask for your vote for my reelection to the city council to continue to work hard on the ongoing challenges, which are not easy, such as addressing the budget shortfall, traffic mitigation, neighborhood protection, balanced parking control, balanced development. And I will continue to use common sense, stay focused on issues at hand, while remaining level-headed to find solutions to the challenges we are all facing. Please vote for me, Bob Frutos, as I'm number five on your ballot, and I thank you for your continued support of me on the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Guillen, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Good evening. I'm Juan Guillen, 24-year Burbank resident and a small-business owner. I pose a question to the audience and those watching at home. Are we in a better position today than we were four years ago? We have increased infrastructure demands, we have unfunded pension liability, and our budget is not balanced. Last year, we approved a budget. It was a four-year projected balanced budget with a shortfall in the fifth year. Why did we wait a whole year before saying, "Hey, maybe we should address the fifth year"? Who did we hold accountable when, one year later, our current mayor is facing a $1.5 million deficit? Only in the public sector can we go from a five-year projected balanced budget to the following year having a $1.5 million shortfall and no one being held accountable for it. We say we want to help businesses, but we constrain them with parking, telling them, "Oh, don't worry about it. Here's a bike rack. People are gonna ride their bikes." And what happens is, it affects our residents. We need to think outside the box. We hear that all the time, but we keep doing the same thing. I fought to protect our country and the Marines as a veteran, and I'll fight to protect the residents of our community. I am number six on the ballot, and I vow to never turn a deaf ear to the residents and their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony, your... Mr. Anthony, your closing statement, please.
Um, as a disabled citizen and someone who has been homeless, I am very disappointed in the League of Women Voters tonight because none of their questions address that concern. There are a lot of people in Burbank who look at their neighbors living in the parks, living underneath the overpasses and behind the, the train yards, and they realize that something is wrong. There is a rising homeless population and in it, all of these mitigating factors, uh, income inequality, the lack of, uh, good-paying jobs, the lack of affordable housing, it can be counted and seen by the number of people living on the streets and every year goes up. We have to do something different. I have a lot of ideas, a lot of innovative ideas, but the best ideas come from you guys and I want to hear them. My name is Constantine Anthony. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. And thank you again for hosting this once again, the League of Women Voters. I have the perspective of 25 years or more involvement in our community. And although it wasn't specifically addressed with questions or answers this evening, I want to address a couple of things that are very important to me and I believe the citizens of our community. Number one is accountability. Uh, it's already been mentioned, we recently had a situation where $50,000 of taxpayer funds were given for a political campaign. And when it was questioned and called for to come and get to the bottom of it, I'm sorry to report that the other four council members did nothing to do what they needed to do to bring the people responsible to answer to the public. I think there has to be transparency. We recently had a major vote on the airport development. Over 45 meetings were held in closed sessions. When key decision-making was made, the public was excluded. There were rushes to judgment. This has to stop. I'm, whoever may be on the council, they have to be respectful of the community residents. They need to listen to them, respond to them. They are not elected to represent developers. I am not opposed to development in our city. In fact, I welcome it and encourage it. But it has to be the right type of development and it has to address the community so the impacts from development benefit the public, don't harm and adversely impact the public. I, I'm trying to run again to continue a voice of reason on the council. I will work with anyone in the council, whether they agree with me or not. I welcome that dialogue. But we have to stop ignoring our public. We have to start listening to the people. They know what's happening in their towns and neighborhoods, their communities. They know what their children's needs are, they know what their economic situation is. And we have to do better decision-making. We have to address traffic issues, we have to address our community issues. Please vote for me again. Give me another chance of four years and you'll have a good voice up here once again. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our city council candidate forum. We're grateful to Drew Sugars, uh, the public, Burbank Public Information Officer, and the staff of the Burbank Channel, including Walt Lutz and staff, for their valuable support in making this event possible. If you want to talk to the candidates personally about issues that concern you, join us at the city's candidate meet and greet being held at Burbank High School on February 8th. For more information, call the city clerk's office or visit the city website or the league's website. Our thanks to the candidates and volunteers for participating in this evening's forum. The League of Women Voters of Glendale, Burbank would also like to thank both our audience in attendance and those of you at home. Please be sure to mail in or drop off your ballot so that it is postmarked or received by February 28th. Thank you and good night.